And call this meeting to order? Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a general boy scout back there. Would you like to join us up front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Come on up to the podium? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's your name and troop number?
Connor Hewles, Troop 622.
All right, well, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Ms. Gutierrez, do you have anything to report?
We did convene in closed session, and there are no reportable items today.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Councilmember Littster.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Are there any items for gender review?
Madam Mayor, there is one for Item 5C, the sanitation item. The supplemental item reflects an increase in the number of protest ballot received from 405 to 471. And we were just handed one additional protest ballot, so the total number of protest ballot received are 472.
Thank you very much. Any other? All right, thank you.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, thank you, we can move on. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2025 as Older Americans Month. And Office Specialist, uh, Candace, Office Specialist II Candace Gray is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Simi Valley Council on Aging Executive Board Chair, Bill Oliver.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. This evening, I would like Simi Valley Council on Aging Executive Board Chair, Bill Oliver, to come forward to accept the proclamation designating May as Older Americans Month. The City of Simi Valley recognizes the valuable contributions of its growing population of older adults who enhance the community through their work, volunteerism, and civic engagement. With over 20,000 residents aged 65 and older, the city is committed to supporting seniors, their families, and caregivers by promoting well-being, financial stability, and the ability to age in place. Efforts include providing home and community-based services, addressing food insecurity, and ensuring access to essential resources. The City of Simi Valley is proud to recognize May 2025 as Older American Month. This year's national theme, Flip the Script on Aging, encourages us all to challenge outdated stereotypes and instead celebrate the energy, creativity, and vitality that come with age. Older adults in our city continue to lead, inspire, and innovate, proving that aging brings new chapters full of possibility. Through their contributions in the workforce, in volunteer roles, and within their families, they light the way for future generation. It is with deep respect and gratitude that we proclaim May 2025 as Older Americans Month in Simi Valley, presented this fifth day of May 2025.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and this is my first official year belonging to this group. So I'm happy to be able to present this to you. Our older Americans mean a lot and provide a lot of sustainability to our communities, as well as our senior center. And I have an 84-year-old mother here living in Simi, so this means a lot, I think, to all of us out there. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mayor, I appreciate it. City Council and the city for recognizing the value of the seniors in our community. They're the ones that got us here, so we have to take care of them. So I really appreciate the city's focus and concern and help with the seniors center, where we can help provide services to the seniors here in Simi Valley. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And Youth Council Teen Wellness Chair, Tonvi Iju, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. My name is Tonvi Iju, and I'm a current senior at Simi Valley High School. And I'm currently the Chair and the Youth Council Teen Wellness, Chair of the Youth Council Teen Wellness Committee. This evening, we are recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to ask the following individuals to come up, just left of the podium. Brad Friday. Mr. Friday is the Prevention Data Management Coordinator for Ventura County Behavioral Health. Dr. Loretta Dennering, the Director of Ventura County Behavioral Health. And they are joined by Youth Council Member Pratika Bajit. Developing and maintaining healthy and physical mental habits is essential to building a strong, healthy community. While one in five people will experience a mental health illness during their lifetime, everyone faces challenges that can impact their mental health. Despite ongoing misconceptions, mental health is just as important as physical health. And serious mental illnesses, though often misunderstood, are highly treatable and more common than cancer, diabetes, or heart disease. In fact, they are the leading cause of hospital admissions nationwide. With effective treatment, individuals living with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Promoting mental health is a shared, is shared, is a shared responsibility among businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, community organizations, and residents. The City of Simi Valley remains committed to fostering a healthy community and encourages residents to explore the valuable mental health services and resources available by visiting the city's website at simivalley.org. In support of this commitment, the Simi Valley Youth Council continues to lead efforts to reduce stigma and raise awareness through various campaigns, such as Youth Summit and the upcoming Teen Wellness Night on May 16th, 2025. Therefore, the City of Simi Valley proclaims the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month to support and promote mental health awareness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the City of Simi Valley, we'd like to present this to both of you. Mental health is so important. I spent this past four days with 220 teenagers, and we, that was one of our topics of conversation, was mental health. And it's so nice to see our youth council so involved in it also. So would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you to your city council and all of your staff. I, on the behalf of Ventura County Behavioral Health and the County of Ventura Board of Supervisors, we want to thank you all for the continued partnership. We have a very strong partnership with the City of Simi Valley, Simi Valley Police with Chief Shorts. And we are diligently working to improve our treatment services and expand our infrastructure here in Simi Valley. And we are very, very grateful for the support from the community and from the council, and thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you, we appreciate everything you do. So thank you and congratulations. Congratulations again. Thank you for being here, both of you. Appreciate it, thank you. And thank you for a great presentation. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring May 15, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And Police Chief Shorts is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Police Sergeant Vincent Allegra. He is one of my favorite sergeants. I just don't tell him that.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Today, we pause to honor the brave men and women in law enforcement who serve our communities with courage and dedication, often at great personal risk. The City of Simi Valley has issued a proclamation declaring May 15, 2025, Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Sergeant Vince Allegra will accept it on the behalf of the Police Department. Sergeant Allegra began his law enforcement career with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department before joining the Simi Valley Police Department in 1995. He served in patrol, special operations, and became a K-9 officer in 2000, working with his partners Hosko, Rocco, and Nero, our first dual-train apprehension and explosives detection K-9. In 2019, Vince was promoted to Sergeant. And he spent over two years as a patrol supervisor and now supervises the Special Investigations Unit. Vince has also contributed as a range master, Honor Guard member, and Explorer advisor, and continues to have a lasting impact on the department and community. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, a day set aside to remember those who have been disabled or made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. It is a solemn reminder of the costs of public safety and at a time to show support for those who continue to wear the badge. For our community, we remember Officer Michael Clark, who made the ultimate sacrifice on April, August 4, 1995. His service and the service of so many others like him will never be forgotten. As we recognize Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Simi Valley, we invite all residents to reflect on the dedication of these officers and to honor their sacrifices. Flags at city facilities will be flown at half-staff in their memory as a visible symbol of our gratitude and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. As the daughter, sister, and niece of a law enforcement officer, this really has a special meaning to me also. And I know, known Vince for quite a few years now. So I'm so happy that you were selected to come up and represent the department on receiving this. Would you like to say a few words, or would the chief like to say something? And he's a wonderful woodworker, too.
I just have one question. Who's your favorite police dog?
I better say Nero, or I'm in trouble. So, thank you.
I could ask Madam Mayor, between the time of May 15 and seven days following, could we have the Civic Center sign lit up in blue for the commemoration of Police Officers Memorial Day?
Yes, I think that would be a wonderful thing. City Manager says we can do it. And there is a memorial out in Ventura also that I'm scheduled to attend. So, thank you. All right, pictures.
Come on, Chief.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D4, Presentation of Employee of the Month to Kenneth, Kenneth Gons, and Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmembers. Let me, oh, okay, let me call up Ken.
He's in, he knows what he's supposed to do.
That's right, exactly. And then also, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce his family in the back row. Wife, kids, and I believe your father's here, Ken? Okay, very good.
Ames?
Yep. So it is my pleasure to introduce Ken Gons as the Employee of the Month for the month of May. Ken is a Senior Instrumentation Technician in the Sanitation Services Division. As a Senior Instrumentation Technician, he is responsible for ensuring that the electrical equipment and instrumentation at the water quality control plant is in good working order and well-maintained. Ken has a positive approach and routinely steps up to, for every, to meet every possible challenge. During the recent period of high winds and regional wildfires, Ken was called upon after hours for an emergency request to get the recycled water flowing to the help, to help fight a fire at the Simi Valley landfill. The landfill uses recycled water for dust and fire control. The recycled water pump at the sanitation plant that sends the water to the landfill was offline due to our ever-popular PSPS power outage. Ken worked through the evening to get the pump back in service by connecting a generator provided by the Water Works Division. I suspect Ken would have been, done the work a lot quicker if I hadn't kept emailing him and texting him, "How's it going?" However, this was not a simple task, and that the, and that just not a simple line that plugs between the generator and the pump station. Ken had to make special electrical wiring connections between the two to get the pump operational and the water flowing again. Ken always provides support in challenging situations and has the ability to perform under pressure with professionalism, skill, and reliability. I am pleased to join the City Council in congratulating Ken Gons as Employee of the Month.
I wanted to give him a chance to introduce his family.
Starting on the left is my, my father, Don, and my wife, Candace, my oldest son, Kenneth, and my youngest son, Daxton.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Our public, oh, no, we have to take pictures. There we go. Thank you for everything that Public Works does, especially for Employee of the Month. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. We have no speakers for this item this evening. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Selection of One City Council Member to Serve on the Interview and Nomination Panel for Returning Youth Council Members. And Community Services Coordinator Ryan Fowler is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. The Youth Council is comprised of 21 members and three alternates in grades seven through 12 who advise the City Council on issues of concern to local youth. The next regular term of appointments is scheduled to commence on July 1, 2025. Up to nine of the 24 youth council members may be selected for reappointment. Twenty youth council members are eligible for reappointment. Therefore, it is estimated that approximately two and a half hours will be needed to conduct the interviews. Councilmember Littster most recently served on the interview and nomination panel last June. It is recommended that the City Council select one city council member to serve on the interview and nomination panel for the prospective returning youth council members to fill up to nine positions on the youth council. The panel will also include the youth council coordinator and up to three non-returning youth council members. Those members recommended for reappointment will be eligible to interview new youth council applicants following the subcommittee's nomination. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. I will say that this is one of the most difficult committees to sit on and to choose between those students because they are all fantastic and all very well-deserving. So do I have any nominations or shows of interest?
Madam Mayor, I'd be more than happy to serve on this committee unless somebody else wants to.
Anyone else?
I'm not volunteering, well, no, I was gonna say, I loved doing it last year. It is the hardest interview to do because all 20 are fabulous, and you want them all to come back, and you only get to pick nine, so I, Mayor Pro Tem Judge would be excellent in that capacity. It's not easy.
Open for a nomination?
I move Mayor Pro Tem Judge to serve on this committee.
I'll second. Thank you, call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3B1, Presentation by Audit Partner with Vasquez and Company LLP Regarding the Annual Audit Completed for Fiscal Year 2324. And Deputy Environmental Services Director Marvin Lopez is here to present this item.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, On an annual basis, the City publishes a complete set of financial statements presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles and audited in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards by a firm of licensed certified public accountants. Financial statements provide information about operations, cash flows, assets, and liabilities that account for the government's manage, management and use of funds. Financial reporting serves as a link between our government's financial information and our city council, taxpayers, and creditors. The City's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024 was completed in December. 2024, was completed in December and provided to and accepted by City Council on the January 27th meeting earlier this year. Tonight, our audit firm has joined us and will be making a presentation regarding the fiscal year 2024 annual reports and their related audits. Please welcome Linda Narquiso, Audit Partner at Vazquez &amp; Company LLC.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable member of the City Council. I'm Linda Narquiso. I'm an audit partner with Vazquez &amp; Company, and I'm here to present the results of our audit of the financial statements of the city. So this evening, I'll start with the introduction of the audit team, discuss the scope of services, talk about the independence of our firm in relation to the city, and then I'll go with, discuss the summary of audit results, the required communication to those charged with governance, and then I'll end with a discussion of the new accounting pronouncements that will be effective in the future year. Next, ladies. So for the engagement team, so I'm the lead partner. I've been with the firm for over 20 years, and I've been mainly performing audits of both government and nonprofit engagement. Assisting me in this audit is Rhoda Dolaga. She's a senior audit manager, and we also have a second manager, Donna Ponse, assisting her as far as reviewing. And we have several senior auditors performing the audit fieldwork. We also have a second partner, Kristy Caneda. She acts as the quality control partner. So before we issue any report, she performs a second review to make sure that we comply with applicable standards. As far as the audit scope of services that we perform, on the financial statement audit, we issue an opinion on your basic financial statements or on your ACFOR. We also issued an opinion on your OPEB plan, so that's a separate report. Since the city expend more than $750,000 in federal funding, we also perform a single audit. So we're auditing your compliance with the federal regulation, the compliance supplement, and grants and agreement, and we perform that audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. And on a year-round basis, in case management has some questions about any financial or accounting matters, we are available for consultations. Independence, I would just like to confirm that the firm is independent in relation to the city. So there are no relationships between any representative of our firm and the city that in our judgment would impair our independence. We comply with the independence requirements of the AICPA as well as the government auditing standards. So going to the summary of audit results, so first on the financial statement audit. So we issued unmodified opinion on your financial statement. So unmodified opinion, it means it's a clean opinion. This is the best opinion that any organization can get in terms of a financial statement audit. It means that your financial statement fairly presents your net position or changes in net position as often for the year ended June 30, 2024. As far as the supplemental combining financial statements and supplemental schedules, they are also fairly presented in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statement as a whole. On internal controls over financial reporting, while we are not opining on your internal controls, as part of our procedures, we have to consider your internal controls to develop audit procedures. But in our understanding of your internal controls, we also test the design and operating effectiveness of your controls, your internal controls. And if we see any exceptions or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we are required to report on that. And I would like to report that no material weakness or significant deficiencies were noted as a result of our testing. Moving on to the single audit, so this is our test of your compliance with the federal funding. So for the major program, at the beginning of our audit, we make a determination, what are the major programs that need to be audited for the year? So based on the procedures performed, we determined that we need to audit three major programs for fiscal year 2024, and that's ALN 16753, amounting to $1 million. This is a funding from the Department of Justice. ALN 2507, amounting to about $3.5 million, and this is a funding from the Department of Transportation. ALN 93045, amounting to $243,000, and this is a funding from the Department of Health and Human Services. So in total, it accounts for about 60.8% of the total federal expended for the year of 7.8. The city qualifies as a low-risk audit. So for you to qualify as a low-risk audit, you have to look back the last two years. You have to have no material weaknesses on your internal controls, and the opinion that we have issued as far as your federal compliance should be unmodified. So it should have been a clean opinion. There's no going concern. So the city was able to qualify as a low-risk audit. As far as the results of the single audit, so as I mentioned, there's no financial statement finding, but there is one finding, a significant deficiency finding relating to ALN 16753. And the finding is related to the exclusion of that federal funding from your CIFA for fiscal year 23. So when we were looking at the supporting documents, so this funding is related to the purchase of radio equipment for the police department. Those equipment was purchased towards the end of fiscal year 2023, so June 2023. Since it was expended in fiscal year 2023, it should have been included in the single audit report in fiscal year 2023. But since this is a one-time funding, it's not something that the city normally receives. And looking at when the city received the reimbursement for the claim, it was received in November of 2023, so it was the following year. So it was unfortunately excluded from the fiscal year 23, but now it's be included in this year where we audited it. And what's good is when we were looking at its compliance with the other compliance requirements, there was no additional finding. Moving on to the financial reporting highlights, I'll start with the government-wide. So government-wide, this is, the accounting in the government-wide is the full accrual. So this is the financial statement that can be comparable to a for-profit entity. So overall net position, so this is the difference between your total assets and deferred outflow against your total liabilities and deferred inflow. So at the end of the year, the overall net position of the city amounted to $473 million, an increase of $20.7 million from last year. So a very good result for the city. Part of that overall net position is an unrestricted net position that also increased by $18 million. As far as the citywide expenses, it also increased compared to the previous year. So it increased to $178.6 million from $155 million from the previous years. And the increases came from higher pension expense, higher insurance costs, higher salaries and benefits. As far as the net pension and OPEB liability, net pension liability amount at the end of the year was $169.4 million, while your net OPEB liability was $69.1 million. So those liabilities are actuarially calculated, so that's based on actuarial valuation. On the fund level, as far as the government fund expenditure is concerned, it also increased compared to the previous year. So for the fiscal year 2024, the total governmental fund expenditure was $108.5 million compared to $99.4 million last year. As far as the general fund, so the general fund decreased by $1.9 million. So you ended the year with $78.1 million in your general fund. But if we compare that to your budgeted for fiscal year 2024, you actually ended the year on a positive note. Because compared to your budgeted, revenue was higher than what you budgeted, expenses were lower than what you have budgeted. So it was still a good result for the city. As far as the enterprise fund is concerned, it also generated net revenues amounting to $11.8 before contributions and transfer, with sanitation generating the bulk of the net income, $14.5 million. Waterworks generated $2.8 million, but transit ended with a loss of $5.6 million. Internal Service Fund reported a net position of $14.7 million, an increase of $2.5 compared to the previous year. On the required communication, as far as auditor's responsibilities, we have enumerated all our responsibilities in the engagement letter that we had sent to management dated April 29. We also have a separate letter, same date, discussing the planned scope and timing of the audit. As far as adoption and change in accounting principles, since this is the financial statement of the city, management has the main responsibility as far as the selection and adoption of accounting policies. So during the year, the city implemented GASB 100 Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. So there was some change in the way accounting changes and error corrections are being disclosed in the financial statement. As far as significant accounting policies, we did not see any significant accounting policies in controversial or emerging areas for which there is lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. There was also no significant unusual transactions that was noted while we were performing our audit. As far as audit adjustments, other than those that are clearly trivial or immaterial, the adjustments that was proposed by us has been recorded by the city, and we are not aware of any unrecorded misstatements. We also did not have any disagreements with management with regards to the application of significant accounting policies, basis of management judgment on significant matters, and the scope of audit or significant disclosures that needs to be included in the financial statements. We are also not aware of any consultations made by management with other accountants about accounting or auditing matters. There was also no significant issues arising from the audit that was discussed or the subject of correspondence with management. As far as significant difficulties encountered in performing our audit, we also did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management during the audit. As far as significant matters that require consultation, we also did not encounter any difficult or contentious matters that require consultations outside the engagement team. Independence, as I mentioned, we are independent of the city, but independence is a joint responsibility within the firm and the city. So we also asked the city, especially the management, to let us know if they are aware of any instance that might impair our independence, to let us know, so that we could continue being in compliance with independence. As far as conditions of retention, there was also no significant issues discussed or subject to correspondence with management prior to us being retained as your auditor. There was also no irregularities, fraud, or illegal acts that came to our attention as a result of our audit procedures. So while, when we are auditing, the objective is really to opine on your financial statements, we are not performing a fraud audit. But if while performing our audit procedures, we encounter an instance that might indicate fraud, then we are required to report that. As far as significant written communication between management and our firm, we have issued a letter of comments to management and management representation letter. As far as significant accounting estimates, so accounting estimate is a significant part of your ACFOR. So we are required to review the reasonableness of management's estimate, looking at the assumptions used, and based on our review, we found them to be reasonable. And the significant accounting estimates that we looked at includes the estimated useful lives for the capital assets of the city, of course, your net pension and OPEB liabilities, fair value of your assets, the valuation or collectibility of your receivables, claims payable, and of course, the net present value of your leases and subscription payments. As far as new accounting pronouncements that's effective for the future year, so for fiscal year 2025, there's two GASB pronouncements that will be effective for fiscal year 2025. So that's GASB 101, compensated absences, as well as 102, certain risk disclosure. We do not expect this to have a significant impact on your financial statement. It would just require additional disclosure if it's applicable. But for next year, fiscal year 2026, GASB 103, financial reporting model, make some changes on how your ACFOR would look like. So it'll be more changes fiscal year 2026, and as well as additional disclosure on certain capital assets such as your right-of-use assets or your leases and your SBTA assets as well. So that ends my presentation this evening. Any additional questions for me?
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, and congratulations to our Administrative Services Department on a very nice, clean audit. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. During this Agenda Item 4, the City Council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called to speak during Agenda Item 6, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Number 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Please move forward.
I will call three names at a time. Jenny Knack is the first speaker, then Mike Shaw, and Johnny Thompson.
Okay, three minutes, let's do this. Good evening, I'm Jenny Knack with Parents Against Standard Susanna Field Lab, but I'm not talking about the lab tonight. Woo-hoo. I've submitted copies of the letter we sent Mayor Kavanaugh earlier in the week to you today in collaboration with UC Davis, UCLA, and the LA Fires Community Coalition. We'd like to invite Simi and Moore Park to partner with us to create a long-term air monitoring solution surrounding the Simi Valley landfill as a response to the site receiving large amounts of debris from the LA fires. Our waste management facility, having no tonnage limits and running operations 24/7, will likely continue to be sought, a sought-after destination for future fire event debris and planning for a long-term, real-time monitoring program that can be publicly accessed, providing electeds, regulators, and community members alike, timely data will be a good way to maintain ongoing community support. Our community was asked to help, sorry, our organization was asked to help collect air quality samples this January because of our experience collecting for researchers after the Woolsey Fire, which burned 80% of the lab. That's only mention. That experience evolved into forming the LA Fire Community Coalition, which has brought impacted and concerned community members from the burn areas and the waste deposition sites into coalition with air quality, public health, and exposure assessments -- with air quality, public health, and exposure assessment scientists. We've got Dr. Nicholas Spada from UC Davis's Air Quality Research Center, Dr. Candace Tsai from UCLA, Dr. Mohammed Belusha from the University of South Carolina. This consortium have put together cutting-edge air quality solutions and expertise that can qualify and quantify exactly what, if anything, there might not be anything, impacting air quality around, surrounding the SEMI landfill and will further identify preventative strategies. As the debris from the LA fires is relatively unstudied, or at least the EPA is not currently releasing their soil classification data even to the top of the Department of Toxic Substances Control, we cannot get it at this point in time. Because that data is not made publicly available, or even to the regulators who are making decisions about where it goes, a collaboration between local governments, community groups, and universities will be a critical step in ensuring long-term safety of all of our communities, because we're going to have more fires, and they're going to want to come here because we've got no tonnage limits, and we make lots of money on it, apparently. It's a lot of money. The university partners anticipate supporting these important tasks through a contracted project with the cities and county to protect the residents. Now, the city of Calabasas already purchased and deployed their monitor, independent monitors. Those cities and the burn sites, sorry, the burn sites are, have monitors as well, they're all networking together in an open source network. It's so exciting, and we look forward to discussing this potential with you and hope we can do so in a timely manner. And thank you so much for hearing me tonight.
Okay, you can start the clock. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for putting up with me for another Monday night. I originally wanted to come and talk to you about Ventura County Health Department put on a forum last week about tobacco, old and new. And since I'm old, I didn't know there was new tobacco. And there's a lot of interesting things to talk about with that, and I wish we had time. But this last Saturday, before I went off to the street fair, I stood in solidarity with them up at SSFL on a, on a, on our little demonstration. But when you talk about SSFL, what we get down to, the root of it, is our government failed at their number one priority, and that's looking out for the health and best interest of us citizens. So it was really concerning. Well, then, the reason I can't talk about other things is I, I want to read to you just the headline of Sunday's Times. It says, "After LA fires testing soil for toxicity yielded alarming results." When the FEMA failed to gather data on hazardous substances in burn areas, the Times found high levels of lead and other heavy contaminants. In this article, whether it's true or not, in this article, it was quoted by the head of the Army Corps of Engineers that those soils were taken from six to eight inches below the soil that they had already removed. The soil they had already removed is sitting up at our waste management site. Now, we all were in this room when we were guaranteed that no toxic substances were coming out to our, we all heard it, we all believed it. Well, if anything in this article is true, then again, it's your guys' responsibility to look out for our health and best interest. And I really think it's imperative, and I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, I don't know what to do. Test the soil that's there, and then if it's toxic, I still don't know what to do. But I know that if anything in this is true, then we're in the process of building our second major fun site here to clean up. So I hope that, I, I, I hope you guys can make the tough decision to figure out how to address this. Thanks for listening to me.
Johnny Thompson?
As you know, my name is Johnny Thompson, and I'm here tonight because the fact that I'm having a problem. But first of all, I come in peace. That's number one. I'm having problems with rats in my, my area. I'm in Area 4 with you, I think I talked with you on the phone. Well, I didn't talk with you, I left a message for you. In the process of that, I'm getting, I'm getting rats in my attic. And they're coming from my neighbor's house with, has Italian cypress that is like maybe seven times the size that they should be if they were up there. They're that high. And I'm, I'm, I'm very irritated because it's bringing rats in my house, I'm hearing all kind of noise at night, and I can't sleep. You know? And so I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention. Oh, also, I got in contact with the code enforcement, and they pushed me aside. I said, okay. So then I got in contact with someone else that's here in SEMI, and they notified me of the fact that a part of my ta, my, my property tax is supposed to take care of some of that stuff. And it's not doing it, I want to know why. That's why I'm here, because of the fact that a part of my taxes are going toward, why can't I get some assistance? You know? I talked to my neighbor, and he got forceful, okay? He telling me I'm attacking him and his family. Just because I tell him, I say, it's rats in the neighborhood, and I've been here 50 years. I've been there longer than anyone else in the neighborhood. I know everybody, okay? Well, I know everybody in SEMI, as far as that goes. But in the meantime, I am so frustrated with trying to get some type assistance to deal with this situation, because rats brings in all type of disease, all kind of, all kind of, these rats are this long from in here to here. These are big rats. This ain't, I ain't talking about no mice, I'm talking about rats. So if anything that can be done in regards to this, I really would appreciate it, because it's, it doesn't really got out of hand, you know what I'm saying? And I love SEMI Valley. SEMI Valley is home, okay? There's nothing like SEMI Valley. And what, and I appreciate each one of you for being in position to help. Thank you so much, and that's, that's about it for the day. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Jennifer Frank, Doug Landon, and Mel Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the City Council, City Manager Argobright, and community members, fellow community members. My name is Jennifer Frank, and I'm here to speak with you about the need for renovations to our library. I'm a board member of the Friends of the Library and a hopeful board member of the Library Foundation. So to say that I'm a library supporter is an understatement. With that said, I speak to you tonight not from the perspective of either of these wonderful organizations, but as a library patron, a library user. I love all libraries, but especially ours, because it belongs to all of us as a community. I am an old-school library user, meaning I go there to look for books. I am consistently impressed with the wide variety of books and other print resources that are available at our library, especially the selection of newly released nonfiction books, my favorite. However, I am fully aware that a lot of library patrons use the library very differently from me. Some people are there to use the computers, some are there to study, some are there to have meetings or attend programs, and some of their, some are there just to have a place to simply be. During the strong winds in LA County fires in January, I was scheduled to attend a Library Foundation Board meeting at the library, but it was canceled because the library was so busy that they needed the space. Why? Because our neighbors, who had had their electricity cut off, were at the library charging their phones and laptops and enjoying a place where the lights were on. How wonderful that they thought to come to our library. Honestly, I was always so focused on the books that I never noticed our library's physical condition. As I spent time there, it became obvious that the current physical state of our library has not evolved to meet the needs of many of our neighbors. The current layout of the library needs to be updated to make it more functional for modern use. For patrons like me who are there for the books, a modernized shelving system would utilize the space more efficiently. Library in, librarians don't shush kids anymore, which is great, but it can make it difficult to find a quiet place to read or study. Additional meeting and collaboration spaces for people who are there for a place to talk or to have a Zoom meeting without disturbing others would be a benefit to a lot of people who use our library. The teen space needs an overhaul to provide comfortable seating, study spaces, and of course, charging stations for their devices. These changes will cost money, which is why I'm here to support the work of the Library Foundation. Through fundraising grants and other funding sources, the foundation can raise money to help with the costs of these renovations. I urge you to move forward with renovation plans for our library. Our community members need and deserve a fresh, modern, and updated library. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Council members. My name is Doug Landon, I'm with the Samaritan Center, and I'm on the Board of Directors. And I just wanted to do a public little notice. We're having a fundraiser, it's called Hike to Mount McCoy. It's our third annual event, it's going to be May 17. And it's going to start at Wood Ranch Pavilion at 8 o'clock, and we're going to hike up to Mount McCoy. If you don't know where that is, it's the cross that's at the top of the west end of SEMI Valley. It's about a four-mile hike, and you can bring your dog, your kids. And once we get up to the cross, then we'll head on back for a light lunch and to have a talk about some of the updates with the Samaritan Center. Right now, we have six sponsors, Strupolis Organization, Rocky Peak Church, Eric Little Insurance, Legacy Oak Advisors, Logic Credit Union, and the Venice Health have gotten behind the fundraising event, as well as 10 fundraising teams through crowdfunding. We're trying to raise money for supportive services for the unhoused and, and those in our community that have food insecurities. The flyer I gave you has a QR code, but for those who haven't seen the flyer, you can go to samaritancentersemi valley.org, our website. Our Facebook account is SEMI Valley Samaritan Center, or you can call the center at 805-579-9166. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and District Council members. My name is Mel Espinoza, I was born and raised in Ventura County, and I reside in Moore Park. I am a young concerned resident here, citizen here in support of Parents Against Standing Sanit Field Lab and the LA Fire Community Coalition, asking SEMI to partner with us to get air monitors funded by the city in order to provide air monitoring data to residents in SEMI and Moore Park. We deserve a right to know the air we are breathing and how, and know if it is safe. Although I do not reside in SEMI, I live within three miles of the landfill. My mother works next to the landfill at the county office. The landfill is growing more and more. I was saddened to hear earlier this year the passing of Mayor Thomas. I was meeting with him regarding my concerns of the landfill odor and the health impacts on our precious community, and he was looking into the matter. Now with the added fire debris going into landfill, we need public air monitoring data that is available for the city. My hope for today is that SEMI Valley City Council partners with us in a timely manner to help fund crucial air monitors for concerned residents and to invest in our community. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that was the last speaker, and the next item on the agenda is item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out to speak. I know that the, the landfill as a topic is one that is very sensitive and very timely. I'm wondering that if there's a way that we can ask for a presentation on how the debris moves from point A to point B and what is done with it, so it could, I, I think I know the answers to these questions, but I don't know that we've had a very public-facing presentation that, that says, here's what's going on and here's what's happening. And then, once we dig into that, we can see what other concerns exist. Additionally, to Johnny's concern, I'm not sure what the city can do about rats and abatement, but what?
So staff has been in contact with Mr. Thompson, and code enforcement has been out to the site, and unfortunately, it really is a civil matter at this point. There is really nothing, there's no code violations happening, so there is really nothing for code enforcement to take action on or for the city to take action on. And staff has been in communication with Mr. Thompson.
I kind of want to go and see a rat this big, but.
I would not imagine it, I'm being.
So, Mr. Thompson, we, it's not a dialogue, but.
My money that I've been paying for, for paying my property tax. And unfortunately, the property tax is supposed to go toward those type of situations.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Thompson. We can't have conversation from the, the community at this point in time. We are just responding to comments, so. Yeah, that's okay, no, thank you.
I apologize.
I just wanted to let you know, thank you.
And then, oh, the, the library needing renovation, you're not going to get any argument, I think, from council. How to, how to go about doing that is the, is the challenge. And Samaritan Center fundraiser, I'm glad you guys are out doing that. I got the opportunity to go and send you off either last year or the year before. I'm going to be out of the country for this year's, but I know it's a great fundraiser, and congratulations. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. With regards to the request for air monitoring with, with the, with the, with our, our landfill, I think it's certainly worthy of looking at. I will tell you, it's interesting, the timeliness of this, only because I, I went and took an hour tour today. And, and I wanted to see, seeing the, the volume of, of car, of, of truckloads coming in, I wanted to get a real sense of what that volume looks like, how it's being disposed of, what it, and I will tell you, anyone is welcome to go up and, and see and take a look for yourself exactly what they're doing with it. I will, and I'll speak to it later, but my takeaway is that they have really done a yeoman's job of separating and monitoring and the way it is all in separate areas, et cetera. But it is true, the quantity is sizable right now. And I'm grateful personally that SEMI Valley is doing its part to try to, to help our neighbors who have lost so much. But nonetheless, your point is we want to be sure that there's not a, a harm, harm to us. I will tell you, it was interesting to watch that even though it was a misty day, they had water trucks making sure that everything, that there's not dirt, et cetera, you know, being sprayed in the air, but everything's being watered down continually, et cetera, et cetera. But all that being said, it never hurts to, to do soil samples and do monitoring, so I'm sure we can talk about it further. But I, I will say that I, I think we're mindful of what's going on there, and we're, we want to be sure our community is safe. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Thompson, regarding your, your issue, I'm, I'm very sorry about that. In fact, what's interesting is my young son works in pest control, and his job is to take care of rodents. And so he, he, he talks, he comes home and tells me his stories about proofing houses, which is his job going in to basically to put, to basically to go into attics and set traps and to make sure they can never come in. I only share that to say, unfortunately, I guess when our city manager says it's a civil matter, I guess there is that, obviously, there are exterminators who, that is their whole job, is to, to get rid of that problem. But I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing right now is that it's not, because it's not a code issue, that's why the city can't take care of that. But I, I'm very empathetic of your situation and very sorry. I, I, it is, it is troubling, I, I understand. I wanted to just add one more thought about. I wanted to just add one more thought about the library. I appreciated, appreciated Jennifer, your coming and speaking. We do have a beautiful jewel in our community. It is in tremendous need of renovation. We very much want to do something to make it more beautiful. Right now, part of the discussion is that that building is owned by the county, and we would love to have that owned by the city, that we could do whatever we want to make it beautiful. So that'll be ongoing conversation. So you're being heard, and I think you have people that are favorable to your concerns here. And again, Samaritan Center, Doug, thank you for being here, and hopefully, we're successful in raising lots of funds, because we so appreciate what the Samaritan Center is doing. So thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. It takes a lot to get up here and speak in front of the council if you're not on a regular basis, so we do appreciate you coming out and doing that. Jenny, yes, I thought that was great. I saw on Facebook that you had reached out to the universities and such to help with that. I thought that was a wonderful start to something, and we'll look at it and discuss it with the city manager and see what options may or may not be available. Mike, it's always great to have you come and point things out. You keep us on our toes. Mr. Thompson, hopefully, we can find, there'll be some type of a civil situation or fix with your neighbor. I do agree, those Italian cypress are full of rats. I had four removed about four years ago from my house for that reason. So that, sometimes that's what needs to be done. Plus, they catch on fire very easily, so... I know, I know. Thank you, and I apologize for that. The library renovation, Jess, thank you. We've been looking forward into that. We're taking our time. We have some considerations to be made. We do not own that building, so you have to be a little conscious of putting in that, a lot of renovation money into a building you don't own, but we're looking at different options. So let's just put it like that for now. And Samaritan Center, can I make a donation instead of hiking?[731.73][731.73](LAUGHTER). Okay, thank you. I will do that. I will make a donation so that I don't have to do the hike, even though it's one of, it's the best view ever up there. Rockies in my Rotary Club lights the cross at the Easter week, and it's just absolutely gorgeous up there to see Simi Valley lit up and such. And Mel, what a great job you did coming forward and speaking, so thank you for being here and for representing Moore Park so well. All right, thank you. We can move on to the next item.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings under consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for testimony for this Item 5 for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments should be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Public Hearing, Item 5A, A Public Hearing on the Draft Regional Consolidated Plan Fiscal Year 2025-2029 and to Authorize its Submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Communities Administrative Officer of Environmental Services, Julia Ramirez, is here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? No? All right, thank you. May we move forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are presenting the Draft Regional Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2029. This is a collaborative document between all incorporated cities and the unincorporated areas of Ventura County. The County of Ventura serves as the lead agency with MGM Associates as the consulting firm hired to prepare this report. We are joined today by Mr. Rudy Munoz, President of MGM. The Consolidated Plan is a way for accessing Ventura County's affordable housing and community development needs, analyzing housing markets, articulating priorities, goals and strategies for affordable housing and community development. The Consolidated Plan is mandated by federal law and regulations and carried out by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive federal funding for affordable housing and community development initiatives benefiting primarily low and moderate-income persons. In preparation of this report, stakeholder and resident engagement activities took place by conducting in-person and virtual meetings, as well as online surveys. The housing profile for the county is illustrated in these following slides. Taking the results of the input gathered, the strategic plan priority needs was developed. A projection of anticipated resources and use of funds is illustrated in this slide and is further detailed in the following slides. The first goal is to improve and supply affordable housing, the supply. Goal number two is to increase and improve social services. The following one is to work to end homelessness. Goal four is to create and maintain quality neighborhoods. Goal five is effective administration. This concludes staff's presentation, and we, as well as Mr. Rudy Munoz with MGM, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff from City Council members? All right, seeing none. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Madam Mayor, we have no public testimony for this item.
Thank you. Then staff doesn't have to respond to any comments or issues raised. The hearing is now closed. Are there any further comments or questions from the City Council members? Councilmember Litzter.
I was going to ask one question. I just wanted to make it clear, the purpose of this consolidated plan is to guide the entire, basically, the use of, I mean, I would like you to articulate what it is. I think I know what it is, but could you help me articulate the purpose of this consolidated plan?
It pretty much takes the inventory of the needs of the community and what, how the community is going to assess those needs or meet those needs.
And specifically to be used in guiding towards CDBG funding...
For us, it would be for CDBG funds, because that's what we receive.
I wanted to be sure that was clear, on, clear what that intent was. I just, thank you so much. I just wanted to actually share just one comment from the report that I think is, just from me, was telling as I read through it. It was on page 76, if I can find it. Just, I, I thought it was just interesting. We know that we are an expensive county where our salaries don't match the housing costs. We're just one of the most expensive in the country, which is concerning, of course. But I just thought I would share just something from the report that says, "Economic expansion over the last decade and a lag in production of new housing units since they have created a housing economy that is overburdened." But what I thought was interesting is, result Ventura County households have been increasingly cost-burned, but what, what I thought was is interesting is that, basically, homeownership is out of reach of more than half of Ventura County's households, and basically, it says that there is need for housing over all income types, from low to high. It's not just a problem in the lowering, but basically, it's just become so unattainable. And so, on that happy thought, I just wanted to share that thought, that as I was reading the results, it's clearly, there's no easy solution. But anyway, I appreciate the report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I approve the priority summary authorized the submission of the draft regional consolidated plan.
Mike is not on. Fiscal Year 25 through 29 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorize the city manager to finalize related documents in association with the plan.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We can proceed to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing, Item 5B, A Public Hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Allocations, the Draft Fiscal Year 2025-26 Action Plan, and the Draft Citizen Participation Plan. And Administrative Officer of Environmental Services, Julia Ramirez, is also presenting this item.
All right, before we begin this item, are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, please go ahead.
Good evening, once again. On March 17th, 2025, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee recommended that the City Council approve the draft fiscal year 25-26 action plan with the committee's preliminary funding recommendations, as well as the draft fiscal year 2025 amended citizen participation plan. In CDBG, there are three funding categories of allowable expenditures: public service, capital improvement, and administration. Two of the three categories have caps. Public service is limited to 15%, while administration is limited to 20% of the entitlement amount. This year, staff processed four public service applications and one micro enterprise application, which falls under the capital improvement category. In accordance with city policy, the funding in this particular bucket will be allocated to prospective applications with half, and the remaining funds geared towards the annual minor streets rehabilitation program. Public service applications are funded on a two-year basis. Therefore, the allocations for year one will be applied to the second year, so long as the applicant organization remains in compliance with HUD regulations and the city receives CDBG funding. Staff recognizes that the current administration has recently submitted budget proposals that call for the elimination of CDBG and home programs. Staff is not aware of any specifics regarding if, when, or how this would happen. To date, HUD has not yet notified the city of the fiscal year 25-26 CDBG entitlement amount. HUD is expected to formally notify the city in the coming weeks. However, the fiscal year 24-25 allocation amount of $672,694 is being used at this time. This amount is an estimate for the upcoming cycle. When HUD announces the grant amount, staff will modify the estimated funding and make adjustments based on the percentage of the preliminary allocations to the total amount available within each category. As required by HUD regulations, the draft action plan for fiscal year 25-26 was released for a 30-day public review period on March 21st, 2025. The draft action plan contains the preliminary allocations recommended by the committee. Concurrent with this year's action plan, staff is recommending that the committee amend the citizen participation plan as necessitated by recent changes in the city's exception community status, clarifications, and details to further clarify what's in the citizen participation plan. The citizen participation plan followed the same public review period as the action plan. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the committee's funding recommendations and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded for fiscal year 25-26, adopt the amendments of the citizen participation plan, and authorize the submission of the action plan to HUD. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Are there any questions of staff from City Council members? Councilmember Litzter.
Couple of questions. I need to go back and find it. Somewhere in the report, it said that CARE or something was asking for an additional $3 million. I'm sorry, not, not $3 million, I'm sorry, $3,000.
That is correct.
One of those threes. Sorry, $3,000.
Slight difference, yeah.
Slight difference.
Yes.
Is the recommendation that's being put forth, does that, consider that $3,000, or that would be an amendment that we would have to make if we wanted to honor that?
It does not consider it, no.
It does not consider it? And the reason for the request was?
Initially, the applicant, I believe, was, we had conversation, and we thought it was under the public service who had a cap, has a cap of $45,000, but it turned out to be under the...
Capital improvement.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Second question, funny that we would have had someone speaking to the Library Foundation Improvement, and I had written this in my notes as I read through it, and this is for future reference, but not for right now. Could the capital improvement category include renovating the library in the future? Could that be considered a capital project that would be possibly supported by capital, these capital improvement funds, CDBG funds?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to put that away for future reference, and I, hopefully, we can consider that as a city. Those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, at this time, we would like to open the public hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Madam Mayor, we do have two speaker cards.
Thank you.
Anika Sumby.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council members. My name is Anika Sumby. I'm the Executive Director of the Samaritan Center, and I would like to make a comment on the recent CDBG allocation that the committee provided, and I'm going to read from this, so I stick to my script and not go over. We do deeply appreciate the support that the city has been giving us for the CDBG grant over the last many years, and it's been instrumental in allowing us to deliver critical services to our community. While we are actively working on diversifying our funding services and reduce the reliance on city grants, the reality is that support like the CDBG grant remains a cornerstone of our ability to provide these services effectively, especially right now, a lot of grants are on hold, we know that, and a lot of them have already been canceled, which we are feeling as well. We have received CDBG grant funding of $45,000 for case management for many, many years now, but with no adjustment to inflation, the value has significantly diminished over time, and it's making it increasingly difficult to cover essential costs. Now, the recent reduction of our allocation to $35,000, which is $10,000 less, presents a significant challenge for us, especially as this allocation is per year but for a two-year contract, which means the amount is insufficient to sustain a staff member on a two-year contract, forcing us to either seek additional funding to cover the gap or to hire staff for only part of the year, which would result in layoffs and rehiring for year two. Such disruptions is really negative, would have a negative impact on our staff morale, on training, and just on our overall client services that we're trying to provide on a continued basis. With such a reduction, even fewer resources are available, which will inevitably result in fewer people receiving the help that they really need. We understand the difficult task of distributing limited resources... We understand the difficult task of distributing limited resources among so many very deserving nonprofits, and I know it's really hard for all of you guys sitting up there. I'm glad I don't have to make this decision, but perhaps the council could consider or explore alternative solutions and other funding strategies that might supplement such options to just ensure that organizations like ours can continue providing vital services while also pursuing our goal of financial sustainability. And thank you so much for your continued support and partnership, the Samaritan Center. Our staff and clients really value the city's support, and I hope we can navigate these challenges together. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Tracy Hemnuck.
I'm going to be really brief. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and council members. My name is Tracy Hemnuck, and I am both a board member of the Samaritan Center and a proud resident of Simi Valley. The Samaritan Center has been a cornerstone in our community, providing essential services to our unhoused neighbors. We offer daily meals, access to showers, laundry facilities, mail services, comprehensive case management. Our mission is to meet individuals where they are, offering support that fosters dignity and path forward to self-sufficiency. In the past year, we've seen a significant increase in demand for our services. More individuals and families are seeking assistance, and resources are stretched thin. Community development block grant funding would allow us to continue this work and fund our caseworkers. This funding isn't just about sustaining our operation, but it's about investing in the well-being of our entire community. By supporting the Samaritan Center, you're helping to create a safer, more compassionate Simi Valley for all residents. I urge you to consider our request for CBDG funding. Together, we can make a tangible difference in the lives of most who need it most. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Thank you. Does staff desire to respond to any comments or issues raised?
No.
All right. Thank you. This hearing is now closed. Are there any further comments or questions from the city council members? Councilmember Litzler.
Actually, I hadn't taken off my button from before, but since you called on me. What I, I'm looking at the allocation, and it's very clear that they were not able to award the amounts to, anyone got the full amount that they requested in the social services, or public services, excuse me. And it was interesting, I had this conversation earlier with our city manager. Basically, if I understand the nature of this grant, we can only use 15% for public services. Isn't that, that's constrained by CBDG? Is that correct?
Yes, that's by federal regulation.
By federal regulation?
Yes.
And so, and of course, these, that's the category that we're looking at with these four specifically that are less than.
Correct.
And so, and help me understand, this allocation is for '25 through '27, is that, or is this through, or is it just for the remainder of this two-year cycle?
It's for '25, '26. So, public service applications are accepted for a two-year cycle, but the funding is yearly.
Right.
So, if they are funded for '25, '26, and they are in compliance, and they're meeting their goals, spending their money, and the city gets funded for '26, '27, they don't have to reapply.
Okay. So, why did I, when we had the discussion with the, why did I think this was in the middle of our two-year cycle, which was why, when we were having the discussion with the foods program at the senior center, I, for some reason, I thought the reason we couldn't discuss it was because we were in the middle of the two-year cycle. I must be an error, then, what, we were at the beginning of the cycle and didn't realize it?
I think that at the point in which we were determining this, I think we were already at a point where we were unable to apply. It's possible, I'm trying to recall back to the conversation, but for some reason, we were unable to pursue CDBG funding at this time for the Meals on Wheels program.
Okay. So, in that instance, it's going to be two years before we can then can discuss it.
Right.
Hmm. That was not my understanding. Okay. Coming back to the issue at hand, I'm sorry. If, obviously, whether we even are going to get any funds is still up in the air, and you made that very clear. If we approve this as it is, is there a likelihood that we would be getting a different, larger allotment? Does this ever get revisited? In other words, mid-year, if we, could, I mean, I'm thinking, obviously, this is the Samaritan Center who's come and spoken to us. I'm sure the others may want to speak as well, but could that be modified in the second year? Does that ever happen?
It hasn't, but the two-year application is something that the city has discretion over. It's not HUD mandated.
So, it's a resolution, it's not, okay, it's our little internal.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala.
Just from a procedure perspective, are we able to make changes to what the desired allocations are on here? And if so, when do we do that?
Go ahead, Julia.
Make changes to the, what the committee has recommended?
Correct.
You are able to, and tonight, right here, right now.
Like right now?
Yeah.
Would you like us to pull up the spreadsheet?
Well, and back, councilmember, Litzler first had mentioned, when, also for the, for the Upwards program, do we have to also vote if we want to give the additional $3,000 to that as well? Is that a separate vote? How does this all work logistically?
Yes, correct. So, as written, the recommendation doesn't include that $3,000 extra that is being requested, so we would just, you know, add that as part of your recommendation at the end.
Okay. So, since you said right now, what I'm leaning towards is changing what the recommended allocation is, and the reason for it is because we only had one group that actually came to us and said that they would like us to change the amount that was provided in the recommendation, and all three other organizations had the opportunity to come and to speak and to advocate for themselves, and they didn't. And so, because of that, I'm thinking that I would want to give the Samaritan Center the additional $10,000, and then the other three just get reduced, you know, a third, a third, a third. I know no, not, no one got their, their recommended, or what their request was, but I, for me, I, it carries a lot of weight when someone comes in front of us, when everyone else had the opportunity to do so, to make their case. And so, I'm, I'd give, I would give credit to whichever organizations took the time to come out and to ask for additional funds.
I will tell you that the current CDBG program has a minimum application funding request amount of $18,000, and if funded, a minimum $15,000 funding. So, the $15,000 is the minimum. If you fund those organizations.
Julia, can you put up the spreadsheet?
Yes, of course.
That will make it easier. Thank you.
Oops. So, what she's saying, what you're saying is that the senior concerns and Livingston Memorial are both at their required minimum of 15K?
If you decide to fund them, yes.
Correct. Which means if we were to take money, give more to the Samaritan Center, it would have to come from Many Mansions. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
If I might, my son pointed out to my wife the one time, the minimum was actually zero. So, we could theoretically not fund one of the other things entirely and then allocate the funds, just, just to go along with your line of thinking.
I just thank you for that.
In the report, I didn't see, but maybe I didn't look close enough, the intent and use of the funds of the, of all of the, can you, is that in the report? And if so, can you direct me to where that is, or can you maybe just summarize? For instance, Many Mansions Supportive Services Program, their intent of their funds is?
They will provide supportive services at their three locations, which is Pepper Tree, Casa de Paz, and La Rejada here in town. Senior Concerns is doing their advocate case management at the senior center. The Samaritan Center is doing the case management wraparound services at the Samaritan Center, and the other one was Livingston Memorial. They have a, it's like a traveling nurse that goes and assists people who have hospice, who have other illnesses, so that the, it's not only the nurses, it's also the, it could be doctors, it could be caseworkers that go to individuals' homes.
Councilmember Ayala, were you done with your questions?
I'm done with the questions, but we'll, I still want to, you know, we still need to propose the change.
All right. Let me have Councilmember Rhodes also take his turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think it's going to lend to the conversation that you started. Of our, I am reluctant. I've gone through the pain of sitting up here and rethinking what the committee has done, and, and that's always a questionable endeavor, because the committees come back and say, why did you have us convene at all in the first place? And to that, I would say, thank you, committee, for all of your service and your work and your thoughtful considerations of this, and that got us to here, and now we're doing our job of deliberating and, and seeing if we can tweak the recommendations. Of the services on this list, and Councilwoman Litzler, to your point, there were some bullet points of what the services were, but the applications were not submitted in our packet to really say, hey, we're going to do these things, and that makes my job of analysis a little bit different. But what is true is there's a scoring system on these, and the highest scoring entity is the Samaritan Center, and the Samaritan Center does offer a service that the city, if we had to do it, would be probably much more expensive and cumbersome for us to do that. And so, I like and support the Samaritan Center doing what they're doing and want to give them some sense of reliable funding to this. An admonition to go along with that statement, since we have board and management here, is a Mount McCoy Cross fundraiser, if it's not raising $20,000, it needs to be more. There needs to be a board of directors that says, we're going to be more self-sustainable because we can't guarantee this funding, and if it goes away, we don't want you to die. And it's an important service for us. That being said, the shortfall of the funding is a little over $9,000 per year. And so, my first question to staff, which I think I already know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway, is there a magic pot of money hidden away, squirreled away somewhere that we could draw from to supplement this recommendation from the committee to where we bring Samaritan Center up to its requested $45,000 amount?
I would say if the city council wants to consider perhaps using surplus funds when that report comes in, like September-ish, that would be a possibility. We'd have to revisit the surplus funds policy, but that would be the only, I would say, unallocated fun, pot of money that I can think of at this point. We do have the community projects grant that is coming forward to the council at the next meeting that the Samaritan Center also applied for, and they are being recommended for funding there as well.
All right. Thank you. That's kind of the answer that I suspected, in that, that surplus funds already has an allocation to it, so then we would be robbing one entity to give to another entity, and that, that becomes cumbersome. So, to Councilmember Ayala's thought process, I would like to find a way to get the Samaritan Center to their funding level of $45,000, and, and, and yet, I don't want to, sorry, and yet, I don't want to diminish dramatically Many Mansions because their supportive services program is also a valued part of what we're doing in the community, and they're the second highest scoring. If we were to do it, I believe that my recommendation would be to take the subsidized care program out and then distribute the funds to Samaritan Center and Many Mansions to bring them up to their, or closer to their funding, flush out Samaritan Center, the balance going to Many Mansions. I'm not advocating strongly for that. I'm saying if we did it, that's how I would like to, to see the reallocation go.
City Attorney Gutierrez.
Thank you. I just, there we go. I did just want to point out that one option, just because we were interested in maybe the ways that the money is going to be used for the different centers or different nonprofits that have not spoken, I believe we have a couple representatives in the audience. There's always the option for the city council to reopen the public hearing, ask any questions or hear about the different projects that they would use the money towards if that would help in the final determination of this hearing.
Thank you. Do any council members have an opinion on that? Okay. I think we, since there are representatives from the other applicants, I think it would behoove us to listen to them, give them the opportunity. See, so we will reopen this hearing, and those that are representing, would you, you'll need to fill out a speaker card, but you can come up and represent, do your talk first. She'll give you a card to complete. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Melanie For. I'm the community impact manager at Upwards, also was a client. Both my boys went to Upwards Partner Daycares in LA. A point of clarification, we're not limited, but we're under the economic development umbrella, so we're not really a part of this conversation for the public service cap. I did want to address your question, Councilmember Litzler, about our request for the additional $3,000, and that was simply because typically the budget for the scope we proposed would be $48,000. However, when we thought that we were under that $45,000 cap for the public service projects, we were willing to add that as part of our contribution, and of course, would still be willing to do so because we'll stand by our application. So, I just wanted to explain that. Since I have a little bit of time, I just want to highlight who we are and what we do. Upwards represents over 250,000 micro enterprise childcare providers nationwide, majority of which are women-run and minority-owned. That includes 68 here in Simi Valley. So, what our program does is really bolster these family childcare providers. These are in-home daycares with the digital tools and business support that they need to be really successful long-term. So, as you may know, childcare providers earn less than $18 an hour here in Simi Valley, qualifying the majority as low to moderate income, and at the same time, there's 60% of children under the age of six who lack access to licensed childcare in the city. This is a conservative estimate because the daycares also help with kids up to the age of 13 with before and after school care. So, it's a very notable capacity gap, and our boost program's really designed to help with both ends of those challenges. Pair the childcare providers with a personal business coach to give them the tools they need to streamline all the administrative side of running their in-home daycare. Help with hiring and onboarding teaching assistants, and Upwards actually contributes a teaching assistant subsidy to help offset the financial strain of doing that. And in turn, they can expand capacity and open up licensed slots in the city. And something that I would emphasize is, as a parent, you know, who was first a client for years before I joined the Upwards government division, is that it's not just our mission to expand access to affordable care, but also improve the quality of care. And that's something that our curriculum database and our training really helps do. So with the one program you're funding, we are so thankful for the committee's recommendations and staff support. With this, it will have positive ripple effect in the community for years to come because we really, really try to align with the proverb of "teaching a woman a fish, not giving her a fish." So thank you so much for your consideration, and I just wanted to make my voice heard in case any other questions come up, but we are really, really appreciative of the support and not submitting... I tried to submit the public comment earlier and got a little confused, so I just wanted to, to your point, say that we're here and we really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Harvey. I am the Director of Development for Senior Concerns. We've been serving the residents of Simi Valley since 2007 through your Senior Center by providing advocacy services where we have a caseworker that is here two days a week. We just added a second caseworker who's bilingual to help also serve more in the community. We have seniors and their family caregivers that come to us from anything from, "I can't pay my rent, I don't know where to go, what resources, where will you point me to?" We've had a senior not too long ago living out of their car and didn't know where to go for the resources, so they came into the Senior Center here, and we provided follow-up services. It can be everything from their solo agers. It's just them. They don't have children or family members in the area. They need to figure things out. They don't understand how to fill out Medicare applications. That's what our team is there for. And we will follow up with them for as long as they need the help. Obviously, we are all, as nonprofits, always looking to cover our costs, but us being here with this grant does not cover our costs, so we get creative and we're trying to raise money. We are very concerned about city block grants, funds going away, because that will impact our organization greatly, as I'm sure the other organizations in this room. So I know we're all doing our best to serve your community, the Simi Valley residents. For us, it's the seniors. And I don't envy being in your shoes, but if you know this is important to us, we want to continue serving in this capacity, but we would also have to look if we can continue to provide that service because that is to staff members as well. So it does make an impact whether we get it. We obviously didn't get the full amount, and it has decreased over the years as well, but we have been committed to provide the services. So we thank you for your consideration, and I know it is a difficult time for nonprofits because folks are struggling economically, personally. So that means less private support, the stock market dropping. That means major donors aren't giving from some of their funds, stocks, gifts, and all of that. So it is a tough time for all of us. So I'd hope you would take that into consideration as we're trying to serve our community the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us. We are here, inviting us to talk a bit about our organizations. I'm with Many Mansions. My name is Dali Chlapoberski. I'm the Executive Vice President. As you may know, Many Mansions has been in the community in Ventura County for 45 years and in Simi Valley for a little under 20 years. We operate three affordable housing communities: La Rahada, Casa de Paz, and Pepper Tree Apartments, 32 households. Every single one of our residents came from chronic homelessness, and they all suffer from some sort of disability. Our work in Simi Valley has been really successful. We have 100% housing retention rate, meaning every single one of the residents managed to get back on their feet, remain housed. Some of them regain, go back to school, manage to go back to being employed, either part-time or full-time. So we're really proud of our work here in Simi Valley. We do serve the most vulnerable people in the community, and we also appreciate the work that all the other nonprofits who are being considered are doing. We can't do it alone. We get referrals from the Samaritan Center coming to our properties in Simi Valley and in other cities in Ventura County. We're all doing this work together. We're all concerned for funding coming in, and we appreciate the work that you're doing to make this determination today. Thank you.
Is that all your speaker cards?
Yes, Madam Mayor. That was the last one.
Thank you. Does staff desire to respond to any comments or issues raised?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Just to double-check, we did not have anyone from Livingston Memorial or Livingston Memorial visiting nurses? Okay, just double-checking. Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
So thank you for your added voices. Appreciate that. We know you're not required to speak, but it's lovely hearing what you're doing.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? I need to close the hearing.
Oh, go ahead.
So this hearing is now closed. Councilmember Lister now. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you for being here and adding your voices. My thought really is that I respect the work done by our committee, and I'm inclined to leave things at this level as they are right now, with the exception of adding the 3,000 to the capital fund, which is... which we have... We have room in that to make that 3,000 adjustment. And so that would be my recommendation, not because I don't think that Samaritan Center isn't deserving, certainly of more funds and in need of them. There's no question. I know that next we have coming up the grant, the WM grant, committee grant, since I'm hoping that there's money there coming. But the other thought I have, I happen... I know that the CBD grants are some of the hardest to use. I mean, as far as the work that you're required to go through to report and to justify and to use, these are the hardest grants to use correctly, and we thank you for your willingness to apply and use them. I just recognize it's a lot of work. That being said, I think that there needs to be continued conversation about surplus funds, and I don't think the conversation is completely done about the possibility of finding a little bit here, a little bit there, to make sure that you are whole. So my inclination would be to move forward with what is recommended, with that exception of 3,000, knowing the back of my mind, I'm going to be looking at surpluses and discussions and where we might be able to find $9,096, which would make you whole, at least, your request. So those are my thoughts right now.
Any other councilmembers wish to speak? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I would be happy to so move. I should read it correctly, though, shouldn't I? I move that we adopt... Excuse me, that we modify the CB... Well, basically, that we adopt those points there, but I don't know. Are we modifying the committees to make that 3,000 recommendation? We're not, are we? Is that the modification? Okay. I move that we modify the CDBG Advisory Committee's funding recommendation to add the additional $3,000 for the Care Foundation from the capital category, and then make final determination of projects and programs to be funded in fiscal year '25-'26, and authorize the submission of the fiscal year '25-'26 Action Plan and Citizen Participation Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the city manager to finalize related documents in association with the fiscal year '25-'29 Action Plan and the Citizen Participation Plan.
Thank you. Call for the vote. The motion passes with Councilmember Rhodes voting no. Samaritan Center, we will see what we can do. If nothing else, we'll have another fundraiser, right? Where I don't have to hike again. Okay. Thank you.
Next item is Item 5C, a public hearing to approve the 2025 sanitation five-year-rate study report, make findings pursuant to Proposition 218, introduction of an ordinance establishing sanitation service rates and fees, and repealing Ordinance Number 1300. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1363, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, establishing a schedule of sanitation fees and charges, and repealing Ordinance Number 1300. And Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report? Seeing none, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmembers. I'd first like to introduce Chris Oberender, our Assistant Public Works Director, and John Hamilton, our Principal Engineer, both who worked diligently on this matter. Tonight, we are requesting that the City Council approve the recommendations in the staff report to increase sanitation rates for the next five fiscal years, starting in FY '25-'26 through FY '29-'30. Sanitation Services is a self-supporting enterprise fund funded by user fees that provides for the daily operation and maintenance of the water quality control plant and the sanitation collection systems, as well as funding important infrastructure improvement needs for maintaining and upgrading the plant and the collection system. On February 24, 2025, the City Council received a report to consider increasing sanitation rates and fees. The proposed rate increase by... The proposed rate increase for residential customers is an average of 3.5% each year for the next five years. I should add that the need for the rate increase is primarily due to the need to continue our capital improvement program to repair and rehabilitate the sanitation infrastructure, such as the sewer lines and the processing equipment at the water quality control plant. At the February meeting, the City Council authorized staff to proceed with the Propofication 218 public notification and protest process, and set May 5 for the public hearing to consider the proposed sanitation rates and fees. A proxy made 38,000 notices protest ballots were mailed to property owners, and as of this evening, I believe the city clerk indicated the final count is 472 protest ballots have been received. To deny the increase, the required protest would be 50% plus one of the 38,000, so we are far below that. Staff conducted several public outreach presentations to inform the public of the need to increase sanitation rates. Presentations were made to the four neighborhood councils and the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee. Staff also discussed sanitation rates on the local radio station, The Ranch 99.1. A general public meeting was held at City Hall for the public to ask questions regarding rates. However, no members of the public attended. The proposed sanitation rates was also posted, extensively posted, on the city's website, Simi Valley Television, and information was also made available in the city's monthly community newsletter. Staff request that the City Council approve the recommendations outlined in this evening's staff report, including introducing for first reading, Ordinance Number 1363, establishing a schedule of sanitation fees and charges for FY '2025-'26 through FY '2029-30, which would increase the rates by an average of 3.5% per year for the next five years. In addition, as you know, we collect our sanitation fees and rates for residential customers on the tax roll. In order to continue the collection of these fees, the county property tax bills, on the county property tax bills, the fees must be adopted at a public hearing with a four-fifths vote of approval by the City Council. That completes our... That concludes our staff report, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchiwaki. Are there any questions of staff from the City Council members? Councilmember Lister.
Mr. Fuchiwaki, thank you for being here. I do have just a few questions. You mentioned the community outreach that you did and mentioned that you went to all four neighborhood councils. I didn't see their report minutes in the report, maybe I just missed it. Did they vote on or register their... Was that part of... Was it just informational, or did they actually vote on whether they approved the rates or not?
Let me ask Chris to respond to that. He and John attended all four meetings, actually, all of the public outreach meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we attended both or all four of those meetings, and at the meetings, there was no vote taken. However, there was strong support for continuing the rates at 3.5%. There were many in the neighborhood council membership there that asked us if we were getting enough, actually, and were concerned that the 3.5% wouldn't be enough, over a half and dozen. So we assured them that the rates were thoroughly vetted out by the consultant and that we were very prudent in the rate increase that we're proposing based upon the costs that were to be encountered over the next five years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate... But so the... Okay, thank you for that insight, but I know that in the past, we've had a resident register concern here in public statements. Their concern was the disparity between our rates and Thousand Oaks sewer rates, similarly-sized And as I looked at the report, they're charging about, at least right now, about $20 a month less than we are. Why the disparity?
We're not exactly sure. We have chatted with them, and they don't quite, as I understand it, they don't quite have an extensive capital project program as we do. We have an old system that requires a lot of repair and rehab, so we're looking at, I believe, spending $40 million in the next five years. I don't know what the size of Thousand Oaks Capital Project is, but that could be a factor in why it's a little bit lower than us. However, we did get some information today that Camarillo is increasing their rates quite significantly above even our rate increase. So it... It all depends on programs that each of the cities have, how extensive their maintenance and operations cost, and of course, capital project seems to be the biggest difference in most agencies.
Makes sense. So the capital projects over the next five years at $40 million is what you just iterated. What is the life expectancy of the... Once you do those capital improvements? Is 25 years, 30 years, five years? What is the...
I won't be around, so I probably won't care.
Assuming you were around.
Yeah, it's 50 to 100 years for after we slip-line a sewer line that should last, according to the manufacturers.
Okay, and I appreciate knowing that. I like the fact that this might... Ron, you may be around in 50, 100 years. That'd be lovely, but...
I hope not.
I appreciate that this has some longevity. And so I guess my question is, we are asking our current residents to pay for improvements that are going to be here well beyond many of their lifetimes. In this instance, I might advocate for a capital improvement bond, which is spread out over the life of the project. which is spread out over the life of 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 the project. Is that something we looked at or have had any discussion about?
We looked at that back in the previous rate increase review. I think it was back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I don't remember totally what the results were, but it adds an increase to the customers to pick up the debt payments. And at that time, the city council did not vote for a bond measure or a bond process.
Understood. I think I was around that. I remember that discussion. Okay.
I think so, yes.
I still haven't changed my thoughts on that, but thank you.
You're consistent.
Okay. And so and we have four-hundred-and-seventy. Well, let me just ask too about the process of putting it on. As I as I looked at where we are related, we're we are different or not unique. Some some have a variable rate where basically it's probably based on water usage with a fixed rate. Is that the difference, I assume, as I looked at the charts? Based on fixed costs, this puts us at least right now at about eight out of twelve entities that were looked at. Is have we explored the opportunity of doing it variable? I mean, in other words, someone who flushes the toilet lot has fifty people in their household would pay more than someone who is a single homeowner. But right now, the way we have this structured, every house pays correct, every property pays the same amount, every single family.
Residential customers pay a
I'm talking residential, obviously. I'm sorry. Have we looked at different at a at a variable rate on top of fixed rate, which is what some of the other cities have?
No, I don't believe we have.
Okay, okay.
We did look at it in about two thousand nineteen, and the city council voted no, not to have a variable rate, to have a fixed rate on the water, because you should be charged for what you use, not because of when you use it or how big your lot is or how small your lot is.
I don't believe we looked at it for sanitation.
Yeah, that was we absolutely
Yeah.
Yeah, that and this is yeah, and I you're absolutely right. We discussed that for water, and I concur with that analysis, Mike. But this, I don't think we discuss it in with regards to sanitation, which is a little different in my mind. But okay. Thank you.
Any other council members have questions? All right. At this time, I would like to open this hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Madam Mayor, we do have three speaker cards. The first one is David Service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is David Service, and I've been a resident in Simi Valley for quite some time now. And it was interesting that the question that Councilmember Lister brought up is the concerns that I have. There's changes that have occurred in our city now that I bought a home many years ago in a single-family dwelling area. My neighbors passed away, and some outsider came in and bought the house next door, and it is now a three-resident facility. It only has one sewer hookup, so their rate is the exact same as mine. They're going to pay the same. I have four bedrooms, two bathrooms. They have ten bedrooms, five bathrooms. And I think that there needs to be some thought or adjustments made to deal with that, to make it more fair. And that's my comment on that. I understand, got to maintain things. I my career was in maintenance, so some of your peers I worked with several years ago. But yes, and thank you, council members, for making May my month. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorary mayor and city council members. My name is Suresh Bhami. I've been a resident of Simi Valley for the last fifteen years. I admit, I've not been coming to the city council meetings for a long time. I started doing them recently in the last few months, and started to take more interest in what is going on in our city and how our tax dollars are being spent, whether I agree with that or not and make my two cents comment. I have a question for you guys. You say fifty years is an average time for this sewage system. When was it installed? When was city found? Not even fifty years. So how come we are doing all the major things now? And the other thing is like, you know, I'm sure there are a lot of other people like me who are senior citizens, who are on fixed income, and we have to really watch our budget. And if the proposed rate increase, what they're saying goes up, is going to make lot of things more difficult for senior citizens like me and a lot of others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerome?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I find it ironic that the first thing that we talk about is senior citizens and blah, blah, blah. Like the gentleman just said, these people want to raise, and I'm a senior citizen now, I'm on a fixed income. You guys want to raise my stuff ten dollars. Thank you, Councilman Lister, for asking. Why is Thousand Oaks twenty dollars below us? And let's say Thousand Oaks doesn't raise the rates in the next five years. We're thirty dollars ahead of them then. Amazes me. You have people here begging for tax dollars, yet you want to raise mine. Several years ago, I spoke about water rates increases. You sent a postcard about the size of this. It looked like junk mail. The mayor and council agreed, said the city can do better and has has been in this and has been in this format since. I took the time to take a poll on the Simi yada, yada, no rules site on Facebook. Now, I admit, participation was pathetic, absolutely pathetic. If I put Trump's name up there or that clown from that we sent to El Salvador, I guarantee you, I would have had a couple hundred, a couple hundred people on the poll. That's how pathetic, how much you the government relies on apathy. Sure, send all the send it all out. We'll see what we get back. What I did find out was, most of the people didn't get said they didn't get the notice. I wonder why. You know, everybody, everybody in Simi Valley gets a water bill. And I'm not sure, because my wife does the bills, but I know for a fact it comes in an envelope, probably comes in a window envelope with the address here, your name there. And I understand, too. And on the bottom, even though you highlighted stuff, or maybe I did that, but I understand that, right here in green, you put proposed sanitation date increases. This is junk mail. People start their fire with it. They throw it in the recycle if we're lucky. Now, we got people, the leftists, the Democrats, the communists, always talking about democracy, democracy. I'd like to know where John Lapper is tonight. He's always talking about democracy. You know what democracy is? It's where the mob rules. Gentlemen here said we sent out thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand of these. I'm not sure. I thought I heard that we got four-hundred-and-seventy-two back. Was that four-hundred-and-seventy-two no votes or was this four-hundred-and-seventy-two yes votes? My question to all of you is, if we're going to vote on this nonsense, you're going to put it to the vote like law, how many yes votes, how many people sent this in and said yes? How many people said no? And to prove another point, I live here. These people, they don't like me. I went to this person and that person. And so and here, because both of my neighbors, one two doors down, one three doors down, again, claim they never got this. Ninety percent of my pathetic poll said they never got this. You guys could do better. I'm asking you guys to put a thirty-day hold on this, send out a proper poll, a proper poll. And then let's talk about giving what like, look at this, look at this. In comparison, do you see do you see the pie? That's the projected. Where's the pie over here that says what we've done with our tax dollars for the last five years? Where's the transparency, folks? It was four-seventy-two. It's now four-seventy-five. I'm voting against it, and so do my two neighbors down.
Yeah, so do I.
Thank you, sir. And I agree with you. You're giving money away. You're talking about senior citizens, yet we're on fixed incomes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Maybe all of your time is up, too, in the next election.
Does staff desire to respond to any comments or issues raised?
We'll respond to a few. In terms of the age of the system that we have, most of the system was built, at least the Water Quality Control Plant was built back in the sixties. And as the city grew, then, of course, the sewer lines continued to grow or extend. We have about three-hundred-and-eighty miles of sewer line that we have to repair, maintain, and rehab. In terms of other rates, to my knowledge, most other agencies go through similar rate studies and increases, either every five years like us, every year, every two years. I believe Thousand Oaks does it every two years. The speaker mentioned speaker mentioned previous notices from years and years ago. I agree. I was around at that time, and we did. The notice was rather poor, but we re-noticed everybody as a result of that. The notices that we went out this year, I'm not sure what more we can do. They had the city seal. They had the name of the property owner. They had the return address. They had notice on the on the notice that indicated what the purpose of the notice was inside. And in terms of the four-seventy-two or four-seventy-five, those are all protest ballots opposed to the increase. I believe that's all we have for responses.
Thank you for clarifying all those items. We appreciate it. This hearing is now closed. Are there any further comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Judge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to apologize because I was I was misunderstood your question, Councilmember Lister, about the water. You're right, we haven't discussed this. That gentleman brought up a very good point, a point that I like. Is there a way that we can look at people that have ADUs on their property that are not occupied by their immediate family? In other words, occupied by renters and stuff like that, to charge them more for their use of the sewer? Because I think that's a great idea.
I believe that, yes, there is obviously, yes, there is a way. You'd have to go back and do a complete new study with regards to, you know, what the base rate should be and then what your rate should be for like water. How much water do you use? And ultimately, that's similar to how much sanitation water will go down to the wastewater treatment plant. So to my knowledge, we have not looked at that in the past. Could it be done?
Could it be done like on a point like if you say, if somebody comes to apply for an ADU, and they're not, you know, I don't know if they have to tell us, maybe the attorney can help it help me out here. I'm not sure if they have to tell the city where it's going to be occupied by a renter or an immediate family member. In other words, move their parents outside or move one of the kids outside, which is, I don't have a problem with that because they use the bathroom in the regular house if they didn't move outside. But when you bring in renters, that's something that's above and beyond. So when we do the ADU application, is there a way to ask them at that point and find out and then assess them?
I'm not sure if we can ask. However, the the rate is based on the sewer connection itself. So if the ADU goes through the same sewer lateral connection that the house does, then it is going to be counted as part of, you know, the monthly base fee for the single family.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm sure the attorney's going to tell me, no, we can't do that.
Can I follow on to that question?
Councilmember Rhodes, you're next.
Yeah, I just want, thank you. The the follow on. If if it was a lot split and there's a separate address, I would assume there's a separate connection, and then then we've got it. But if it's just an ADU, is there there's usually not a separate connection. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a tough one.
Councilmember Rayla.
To piggyback on what they're saying, do we have to differentiate between if it's occupied by a family member? Could we just say that if you have an ADU, then you are paying an additional amount? Just doesn't matter if your family member's there or not. You have probably income coming in or not, but you still have more people on that property using those facilities.
That could be looked at, yes.
Now, my only question is, you know, timing, right?
Correct.
Because what we're supposed to be voting on is a five-year plan.
Correct.
Which means we don't want to look at this five years down the road to make any change.
Right.
So how would we do that, so that it could be done this time around?
I'm going to look at the city attorney's office. My only I I I'll throw something out, and if the city attorney agrees, then fine. If not, then I'm in trouble. But if we can adopt the ordinance as is tonight and get direction to go back and look at the ADU issue, can we amend the ordinance at a later date and perhaps add that fee at a later date?
You came on a good day.
I know. This is a pleasure. So, yes, so ordinances in general can be amended, but I will say, for purposes of tonight, we did go through the appropriate procedures and did all of that. I know that the county is the one, as part of their tax roll, that, you know, helps the city collect all of this. So that's really the timing piece that the city is fighting against right now to make sure that we can meet their timing standards to be able to collect. But if it is the direction of the city council, our office can work with staff to kind of explore what that would look like. I am not sure if it's a city policy that we have five years instead of maybe like a two-year review of rates, you know, but that is something that we can definitely look into.
As far as I know, the policy or the process that we followed has been every five years. Like I say, I think I believe Thousand Oaks does it every two years. Camarillo maybe do it every, yep, one year, another age. I think it's up to the agency how often they reevaluate their both water and wastewater fees.
Yes, correct. I just didn't know if we had a resolution or some sort of formal policy to that effect. But in any case, we can definitely look at that, knowing the concerns of city council and kind of bring back an item to maybe explain how that would work further.
So just to clarify, if we were to vote on this tonight and it passes, there is a way that we can come back?
Yes, you could always come back. But as it is standing, the proposal is for five years, but an ordinance doesn't have to stay in for five years. And obviously, we would want to work with staff to make sure that the procedures for the Prop Two-Thirteen aren't followed correctly. So that does take a little bit of time, but it is something that we can look into.
I guess my initial thought is, if the ordinance is approved tonight and the second reading at the next meeting, it goes into effect mid-June, we have to send those numbers to the tax collector. So those tax collector numbers will be in place for twenty-four or excuse me, twenty-five, twenty-six. If we make an amendment, potentially, we could make those changes for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if we continue it tonight, maybe we can make a change. So, if we continue it tonight, maybe we can make a change a year from now.
Yep. And then, for some utilities, I know that people who, maybe for seniors, especially the ones who express concern, sometimes there's, like, government subsidies or discounts that they get on their bill. Is that, is there, is that an option for the sanitation rates? Do we, is there anything like that?
So, typically, for government-provided utilities, it would have to be a voluntary contribution. So, if the city council was interested in pursuing that, we've looked at that in the past, and it would be up to other ratepayers to make a donation to a fund that could be utilized to help subsidize other ratepayers. But I was just also going to echo what Ron said, that I think it would be prudent for the city council to make a decision tonight for at least this upcoming year, to ensure that we meet the deadline for the tax roll. And then certainly, we can have staff go back and work with the city attorney's office to look at the other options and considerations related to ADUs and potential variable pricing. But in terms of ensuring that we do have a rate set for this at least coming year, then staff can come back to the council or provide a memo to boxes, however, however the information comes out, for the council to then consider if it would like to take further action.
Because that leaves a lot of options, because if we decide to charge more for an ADU, we could possibly use that money to offset seniors. So, there's always different possibilities, and that will be a lot of conversation. So, I, I agree with City Manager Argobright. I think if we approve this, we need to get it on the rolls in order to collect for the next year. That will give us time to, to look into all the other different options available. It's just, I think we're all in agreement, at least looking into it, so. Councilmember Lister.
So, I have a slightly different question. The way this resolution is, or at least the way it's, it's written, and let me back it up. And I concur that there ought to be some tiered pricing based on ADUs versus just a single residence on property, so I think that's a very good idea. But I'm still, still a little concerned that we are towards the top end, and we are building infrastructure that's going to be around for 50 years, and I very much, I'm not one for debt. I think the time for using a bond is when it's going to be enjoyed by the population for many years to come. And so, I would like the discussion to also be looking at, if we were to approve this, that also be looking at the logistics of, of how we could fund our infrastructure so it's more equitably distributed over the life of its usage with, between all. And so, I just feel strongly that we shouldn't just put all on the backs of the people that have the property today. So, so that, and so I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm being honest, I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm just thinking about my vote right now. But can that be dismissed, or, as I understand, Ron, you can help me understand, help me if I'm wrong, you need four-fifths of a vote on, yes vote, to place this on the tax rolls itself. If you were to get a 3-2 split, for instance, then it would need to be collected just as waste management collects theirs once a month with a regular payment process, correct? Or something of that process.
Yes.
It wouldn't be on the tax rolls, it wouldn't be hidden on the tax rolls as a lump sum one time a year. Instead, it would actually, we'd have to charge it like our water at a regular monthly, bimonthly rate, correct?
It would be up to city and city staff to prepare all of the bills.
Got it, got it. And I might add, this rate is very similar to what we are charging waste management charges. So, that's what we're looking at, is basically comparable kind of a charge, but it's one time on the property tax bill, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, is that an accurate statement to make?
Waste management charge is about, I want to say it's about $55, $60 per two-month period.
Okay. So, is there less, they're half the price of our sewer, then, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
But I think we flush more than we put trash cans out. So, but to your point, to your point about utilizing, we're, we're paying for 50 years in advance, but if we don't replace it now, we're going to be in trouble.
We absolutely have to.
And we've been using it for the last 50 years, so now we need to continue. I, I see your point, but I also see the people 50 years paid for it up till now, and so now we have to, infrastructure, you know, add to it. So, you can kind of look at it both ways.
We absolutely need to pay for it now, but I, I'm, they didn't pay for it all at, I don't think they paid for five years. Do you know what I'm saying? They didn't change the entire system in five years, which is kind of what we're discussing right now. Am I wrong? Are we, we're trying to update the whole, really, we're trying to update all the system within five years, correct?
No.
No.
Okay. So, how much are we trying, we're trying to just to, let me be accurate, how much we're trying to re-
Over the next 10 years, the infrastructure will be spread out over that time. We're only focusing on this five years, and what we're catching up from is COVID downturn.
I know that we didn't do the work.
And so, we delayed a lot of important projects on, on facilities and capital projects because of, because of COVID. So, we're, we have a little bit of catch-up to do in that respect, which is why we're trying to even up our capital projects over the next five years. But we actually planned out to 10 years to make sure our endpoint at five years was at the right place.
Okay.
So, we've, we've tried to strategically and as efficiently as possible schedule out our capital projects to not be a burden up front, but to catch up.
And I know that we have stockpiled a little bit of funds, which is why this is in the higher rate, I mean, in terms of doing, to do the work now. I was just going to say stockpiled, but money's been allocated to do some of the work that's not been, that we're just spending now.
Yep. Right.
Understood.
That's correct.
Understood.
And if I can go back to your point about, if we don't get a four-fifths vote tonight to put it on the tax roll, then it would, as Director Fuchiwaki mentioned, would fall to staff to do, which would then realistically increase the cost to administer.
Oh, sure.
So, I don't know then that the rate study would really be accurate then as to the cost to provide the services.
Understood.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the item as presented in the report.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, are we, I just want to understand what we're voting on. Are we curt, are we putting a, because the report says five years. Are we, are we modifying it for one year, or?
No. I'll read the resolution and, or the motion in full. I move the city council approve the 2025 sanitation five-year rate study. Find that a notice in accordance with Prop 218 was sent to the sanitation ratepayers describing the proposed fiscal year '25-'26 to fiscal year '29, 30 rates and fees and the procedure for protesting the rate increase to the city, and further find that a majority of the ratepayers did not protest the proposed rates and charges introduced for first reading ordinance number 1363 establishing a schedule of sanitation rates and fees, and repealing ordinance number 1300.
And also request that staff come back with additional information on ADU connections? Is that, is that the desire of the council?
Including that, ADU connection piece.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
The motion passes with Councilmember Lister voting no.
Thank you. Onto the next item.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there is one resolution for your consideration. Consent item three, resolution number 2025-10, adoption of a resolution approving the project list and expenditure plan for the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Accounts Fund for fiscal year 2025-26, cycle nine.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A, city council member reports.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bonko. Councilmember Ayala.
I wasn't ready.
I know, it's so hard. It comes up so fast.
But now I'm ready. I'm ready.
Sorry. Got to you too quickly, I'm sorry.
I gotcha. All right. So, on the 22nd of April, I went to our State of Our Schools address with the superintendent, and he did something different this year, where he had a, a student as one of the speakers as well, who went through our school system here from kindergarten through 12. And the student was able to speak about all of his positive experiences that he had in the school district, which was great to hear. And then I left on 4/23 to the Cal Cities Summit up in Sacramento with the rest of the council members. On 4/26, I went to the Youth Employment Services Career Fair. Was great about that, it, even though it was put on by the Youth Employment Services, when I walked in, it wasn't just youth, there was adults that were looking for jobs as well. And the mock interviews were full. The, they were, when I walked in, there was the financial literacy class happening, and all of the seats were full in there as well. So, very well attended. On the 28th of April, I went to the YMCA to meet with their staff and have a walkthrough of all of the enhancements to the facilities that they are going to be doing with their renovation. On the 29th, along with Councilmember Lister and other staff, we went to Adventist Health to meet with their new leadership team, and it was really great to hear about all of their new goals that they have with that new leadership team in place. Also on the 29th, I attended via Zoom the NASA Phase One call. Important about that was that it was because on June, the public comment for the Phase One groundwater proposed corrective actions opened up, and that closes on June 10th. And then I went to Chicago to visit my family for a few days, and now I am back.
Well, we're glad you got back safely.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, April 23rd, I went up early in the morning to the Cal Cities Summit and attended some committee hearings on sober living homes and represented the city in those. Spent Thursday and Friday also in Cal Cities, and others were there in attendance, so they'll, I'll let them speak more about their experiences. But the education seminars and the opportunity to meet with our elected officials up there was, I think, very beneficial. Tuesday, April 29th, I had the privilege of interviewing arts commissioner candidates, and I want to thank all the candidates that came. It was a, it was a wonderful selection process, as it usually is with the city, because so many talented people come out to, to serve the city, and we thank them. On Wednesday, April 23rd, I attended the SCAG conference that went Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. On Wednesday, the executive committee had their meeting, then on Thursday was the annual conference where we ratified the budget, and, let's see. Also on Thursday, May 1st, I attended via Zoom from that location in Palm Desert, the Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting. And I think there's something else in there, but that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, April 21st, before our last council meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with Joseph Metcalf and Katie Garibaldi, who have an event that they'd like to put on in the city that would be wonderful next year. I'm not going to announce it, because I'll leave it for them if they can pull it off and bring it to fruition, but nice that there are people innovating, wanting to do things great, do great things in our city. I, too, enjoyed going with my colleagues up to Cal City Summit. It was very, I found it very useful, helpful, informative, a good chance to have a conversation with many different elected colleagues. I want to thank Rocky for his, taking me into, into the Capitol and giving me his tutorial of how things work and where things are. Actually, it was fun to attend a committee and register my support for one of the bills as well. I will say, there were a variety of sessions attended. I particularly found some value in one that was about how we, as a council, can set goals and follow through and actually measure performance with that. I learned with my role in water a little bit more about PFAS, discussion about budget considerations. One of my takeaways is that we are member of the National League of Cities. I think maybe we could do more in actively being involved in that regard. So, it was a very constructive time. On Saturday, I'm trying to read my own writing. Actually, I'm glad you attended the Yes Job Career Fair, because I didn't have that, I missed it, and I, it's a great opportunity, and so I'm glad you were there.
Very well attended.
And yes, my son did get a job from it a year ago, so it's, it's a very worthwhile endeavor. On Sunday, April 27th, I had the privilege of attending John's Tea Party, which is hosted by the Rotary Club of Simi Sunset, raising funds for cancer research, et cetera, and it was, it was delight, fun to be part of that and play the harp for that. But I have to tell you, it was my event afterwards that I probably enjoyed even more. No offense to the Rotary Club, it was lovely, lovely. But afterwards, I got to go to a park and speak with three Cub Scouts who needed to learn about, needed to speak with an elected official and learn about the difference between majority voting and plurality voting. In fact, I did my little research, so I was accurate, because I wasn't, because I thought I needed to be sure I was accurate. And I learned that I was elected the first time by plurality voting, not by majority voting, but I had to, I brought my little charts to them. Anyway, it was, it was, I appreciate the scouting program, and so that was lovely to meet with them in a park and have that conversation. On Monday, April 28th, I attended the Simi Valley Education Foundation Lou Roth Awards, and it was well-done, and I would like to commend John Downey, Janice Osborne, Jake Finch, Laurie Hoffman, Colleen Conklin, Jennifer Conmay, Mary Carol Sorellis, and, actually, it's truncated, but it should have been the Reagan Library Foundation. Did I miss something there, Mr. Ryan Fowler?
No.
Okay. Anyway, we, it was, it was, we wanted to commend, those are the outstanding work and service of these educators and classified and certificated and administrative people. Truly, it was a lovely evening. On April 29th, I, too, attended the Simi Adventist meeting. Found it very informative, and one of my takeaways is the need to appreciate more what a network we have with their services. I tend to be very loyal to our Simi Valley Hospital, but I learned that they're, that they are stronger with what's being offered within their network, and I need to change the way I speak about them at times. But very much appreciate what I learned in that, in that meeting, and I think a very strong, good team. And what I learned is that they are striving for a five-star rating with the, with their system, which I assumed we were at. We're going to get there. That's all I'm going to say, and so I was delighted that that was one of their strong objectives. Wednesday, April 30th, I think all the rest of you were traveling, and we're off somewhere, at good places, very good places, but as a consequence, I got to attend City of Moore Park's grand opening of their new city hall. I know, and all of you were traveling, I know that, but it was fun to be there. I, I, anyway, I learned, it's a lovely building. There was a few takeaways. In fact, I liked some of the way, there's descriptors, I took a few pictures, a few things that we can learn from. They're doing great things. But I learned that they came speaking of termites and leaks, and, I mean, there was a whole description of some of the physical struggles they went through previous to this new building. So, I'm very happy for them that they have this, this building. It was, it was a very fun time. Thursday, May 1st, that was the National Day of Prayer throughout the entire nation, started in the 50s, and so I had the privilege of attending the annual prayer breakfast held at Cal Lutheran, and speaking, and they invited people of various denominations to speak and pray. And again, I played the harp there as well, but also got to speak, pray for family and youth. It was my assignment, but truly a wonderful event, sponsored by the YMCA and CLU, and just, it's lovely to have people praying for us, elected officials. Speaking of which, I also attended the noon National Day Prayer Gathering that took place outside here, and a large group of people who were really praying for lots of good things, including that we will be successful in our decisions and our governance of the, of the city, and that's not just elected officials, all of the, we are a group as employees, et cetera, making good things happen for this beautiful city. And so, it's lovely that they were there praying on our behalf. Also on that day, attended the Teacher of the Month event by Ed Foundation, held at Mountain View Elementary School, where we honored Carolyn Diedrick. On Friday, actually, I'm going to skip Friday, let me take you to May 3rd, Saturday, the street fair, the annual street fair. Let me take you to May 3rd, Saturday, the street fair, the annual street fair. Yes, it was held, it's held rain or shine, and it was a bit on the moist side, but the net effect was it was actually comfortable, and I think people enjoyed the cloud cover and wearing a jacket. And, but I wanted to say, and I, I wanted to commend a couple of our, of the city's groups. I want to commend the library that had their portable library van there, and not only did they have it there, they had books out there. People were checking out books at the street fair, and they had the computer hookup, and they were actually getting new library cards there as well. So it was a one-stop, full-service library experience at the street fair. I also appreciated our, our police officers, the SWAT team was there. And I have to tell you that I was, I was visiting with them just as the news came through about the horrific plane crash that occurred in our community. And of course, I don't, they were being very gracious about showing their equipment, but I know they, their hearts were all where the, where the emergency was and wanted to be there assisting. I sensed that, but appreciate our, our first responders and our, our police force and all that they do to make our community safe and to also educate our community. Today, I, as I mentioned earlier, I did tour waste, our WM's landfill, and it was really, I, I knew that they had had to develop, you know, to ramp up, but it was really tremendous to see the level of which they have ramped up, including four dedicated scales specifically for the fire debris, and to see that the areas are separately contained and just, just the operation there. It is true that obviously we have always received debris from fires. This is probably unprecedented because the level of fires that occur near us. I learned, for instance, we are getting almost all the debris from the, from the Palisades Fire, that the Eaton Fire is split between a few landfills. But in terms of tonnage, it is sizable, I can speak to that if we ever, if we wanted to. But it was, it was very much an education, and I know that later I'll be asking, making a request when it comes to Love and Be about something, research that I would like done in conjunction with that. But again, I was impressed with our operation and recognized that we are doing our part, certainly to help our neighbors. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, or Tuesday, actually, we left for the League Summit up in Sacramento, and I think enough's been said about that. We did get to meet with our legislature, myself and Councilmember Ayala. I think that was a good meeting. I learned something new about her, and gained a little bit of more respect for one of her decisions. So that was good. On, we were up there until Friday, and the rest of it was just what you always thought it would be. It was very enlightening. Being up in Sacramento is always interesting. But most importantly is I got on a plane for the city, so I think that's a big deal. Monday, no, I'm sorry, not Monday, yeah, yeah, you don't know. Wednesday, April 30th, I attended the SCAG Conference out in Palm Desert, along with Councilmember Rhodes and our city manager. And again, a good meeting. SCAG is what covers us regionally as far as an ability for our city not to have staff doing certain things, because SCAG's supposed to be able to help them with that, and that's their job, and I hope they do. And I hope our city takes advantage of all the resources SCAG provides. On Saturday, May 3rd, I attended the Ride for the Blue out here in front of City Hall at 6:30 in the morning. And yes, it was moist. It was raining. And also, Councilmember Rhodes was there, so we were, we were well represented. Councilman, or Supervisor Parva was out there, Sheriff was out there, our Chief of Police was out there, our Fire Chief was out there, and so was our CHP Commander for the area. And she had just had a big pursuit the day before with one of her motor officers going all the way down into La Cucina. Other than that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's been a couple very busy weeks for me, so my mother had major surgery at the beginning, April 22nd, so spent a lot of time at Las Robles. They were wonderful. Their nursing staff in the CCU is awesome, so I just wanted to give them a shout out. Little self pat on the back. Thursday afternoon, I attended, or Thursday afternoon, evening, I attended the Pacific Coast Business Times, 50 women, 50 top women in business, of which I was selected to be one of those, so I was very proud to be honored with that. I was represented, or I was originally nominated for my career in banking, but then Henry made sure to announce I was the mayor of Simi Valley. He made sure everyone knew that, so that was good. It was very nice. But there were 49 other very deserving women recognized, so hats off to everybody. On Saturday, April 20th, I also attended the, the Yes Job and Career Fair. Wonderful event. It was fantastic. I got there after you'd already been there, Councilmember Ayala, and I expected it, oh, I'm a little later, it's probably going to be empty. It was still full. They, we had all the military, the military branches there. We had different businesses. Our PD did a wonderful job, they were there. I spoke with them for a little bit. And what I also found interesting is we had a area where they were speaking about trades and, and the opportunities available in the trades fields, which is fantastic. I have a couple of nephews that are in the trades, and they have great jobs and have wonderful incomes and are just, it's a great thing to do if you're not college-bound. It's a great thing to look at. Richard from RSPD was there, or from Rancho Simi Parks, he said, he goes to a lot of those, and he said that was the best job fair he had been to. So that was really, hats off to you, Ryan, and your team and the library. It was a great event, great event. On Wednesday, April 30th, I had the opportunity to take off for four days and spend it with 220 high school students, along with 40 other volunteers for Ryla, which is Rotary Leadership, Rotary Leadership Youth Awards. I've been doing it for over 20 years. So that's why I missed the street fair, the Ride for the Blue, and, and multiple of the prayer days. I missed quite a few events, and I'm sorry for that, but this was something that I do every, every year, and I really, really enjoy it and come back feeling good. In fact, one of the students texted me while we were in closed session, saying, hey, I had a great time, so it all, makes it all worthwhile. I did also want to comment on, while I was up in Ojai for this, I did receive texts from the city manager as to what the tragedy was in, with the plane crash. So I'd like to give her a moment to speak about that.
I just want to commend our Simi Valley Police Department, as well as the Ventura County Fire Department. Not only do we have very professional first responders, but they work very well together in such an incident that is a very rare incident to have happen in our community, and our team and Ventura County Fire handled it very professionally. They worked very well together and were, they just did an outstanding job. And seeing our officers respond to an incident like that, where I know our team always does significant amounts of training so that they're prepared for any scenario, I think of all the times that I've heard the chief tell me about the training that they're attending, that's not a training that I've heard that our team goes to. So, but they just did a great job, and I just want to ensure that all of our officers that were on scene and that supported that effort are aware of how grateful that, that we are for them.
Thank you. Yes, I think we all concur with that. So thank you for sharing that. Are there any other, sorry, are there any future agenda items somebody would like to propose?
I do.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. This is with regards to the WM landfill. I learned today, for instance, that currently, that we, we are receiving a neighborhood of about 20,000 tons a day, additional from fire debris, in addition to the 9,000 to 11,000 tons that we get of regular waste daily. And they are really doing all that they can. They're open right now from 4:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, open seven days a week on Sunday. I think we're the only one that's opens. Anyway, what I'm saying is they're doing a yeoman's job, but obviously, there's a lot of impact on infrastructure. And so my question is, I, I'd love to know who's paying for the road repairs. Is that county? Is it going to be, is Caltrans going to be involved in the off-ramps, et cetera? Obviously, there's a lot of wear and tear going on because of it, and so is FEMA all involved? I know that we receive compensation for the additional tonnage, and so maybe that the city's going to bear that cost. I, I just, I would love, I'd like to understand how that is going to, because I have a lot of questions that have been asked of constituents, you know, have you seen, I just, how that cost is going to be, or the repair is going to be taken care of, and, and maybe we tie it to even more of some of the questions about WM or about the landfill.
Sure. So if I can just briefly address that. When the city was initially approached about additional tonnage going to the landfill, it was related to the Chiquita Canyon landfill closure. It was not related to the fire debris issues. So we had initially talked to them about potential, you know, additional traffic on View Line Drive, and we were not anticipating a significant amount of additional traffic at that time. Obviously, the fires have changed that significantly. And so I've been having conversations with our representative from Waste Management about what that looks like. What I will tell you is if there is additional funding requested from the city that could impact and delay permit renewals from Waste Management, from the county. So we've been having some conversations to determine what makes the most sense, because obviously, we are seeing additional impacts to our streets and roads. As far as the freeway goes, that's, that's a Caltrans issue. But as far as our streets and roads go, while we will receive additional revenue from the additional tonnage that's coming, we're not just seeing the impacts on the street going up to the landfill, we're seeing it, we're seeing the trucks all over the community. So the conversations that I've been having with our Waste Management representative address that. So we're still in those conversations. We haven't come to a conclusion yet, but it is something that we're addressing.
So will we be getting a report at some time? Will there be a presentation about it sometime? How, I've just, when will we, what?
I don't have anything to report out yet, because we don't have a conclusion yet. But as soon as I do, I will definitely keep the council informed.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayala.
This is for new agenda items?
Yes.
Yes.
So I do have an item that I'd like for us to consider. So at our last council meeting, we heard that we're facing real challenges with recruitment and retention, especially for our police, public safety, and other city positions, with pay disparity being one of the main causes. So we need to find creative ways to increase revenue to help bridge the gap. The Simi Valley's TOT rate has remained unchanged since the mid 90s. So I'd like for us to consider whether to have staff move forward with further study about what would be involved and the estimates for different percentage increases, also knowing that raising the TOT would require voter approval, so it's not something that the council can impose by ourselves. The benefits of this is that unlike grants or one-time funding sources, the TOT provides a continuous stream of revenue that grows naturally over time as hotel rates increase. The increased TOT revenue could help fund necessary salary adjustments to recruit and retain our police and other city workers. The increase in the rate would be paid by visitors staying in hotels, our campsites, STRs if that gets approved, not by those living here. And tonight's action is simply to begin the conversation and allow staff to come back with a recommendation, and then we would vote to move it to the ballot and allow the vote to a future ballot and allow the voters to have the final say. So that's what I would like to bring up tonight. We would just need a second just for staff to start looking into that.
Well, I would say I would second that. I, I think, only because I know that our, our rates are less than some of our surrounding, and it's worth looking at, that you're not asking for decision, just to explore and gain more information. So for that purpose, I would support that conversation.
Yes, it has to be a vote of the people anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Samantha. It's with great sorrow that we are going to be adjourned in memory of Kathy Hinkle. She's been very involved in our community and in our schools, and will be greatly missed. So we'll adjourn in her memory. Thank you.